Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and anyone for public discussion? Okay. First on the agenda is a discussion decision approved of the agenda minutes dated for December nineteenth.
Oh, no, it's actually, oh yeah.
A week ago.
Yeah.
That's what's on here.
Yep, you're right.
Data for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Or a motion that effect?
Some.
Motion by supervisor Wacter, second by supervisor Stecker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Um, Kyle, did you know, uh, Phil's coming in or? Have you heard from him?
I do not.
Okay. We could always come back to it if he does.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, you can sign for.
Yeah, if he's not there, you can just skip it and come back.
Okay. We'll come back to that. Uh, discussion decision regarding City of Algonah equipment and supplies currently being stored in the Phillips Street building.
Um, yeah, I had asked to put this on the agenda. Um, this last week I was in there for some other reasons and saw what looked like a fair bit of equipment and supplies for, I believe they're the City of Algonah splash pad project. And, um, when I asked Carissa about that, she said she had asked Roger and gotten approval from him to allow them to put it, put stuff in there. And so I wanted to reference back in August thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. We had a agreement with the City of Algonah to use, and it was motion by Jarks, second by Casey. Um, Jack and Donnie were both absent that day. But, um, we approved an agreement with the City of Algonah to use the southwest portion of that building for Christmas decorations only. Um, so we've had a number of conversations where it's been stated that none of us have individual authority. So I guess I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because I was not aware of that until I saw it firsthand.
Do you know the situation, Roger?
Yeah.
Okay, is, are they storing splash pad equipment in there then, or?
I don't know. I'm aware that they asked to store stuff.
Sure.
It was the same time that we were doing the ambulance.
Sure.
We bought the ambulance system for a dollar.
Yep.
And it was kind of retroactive or retroproceeding. We agreed that we would, I think I did mention it to the board. And I know Todd drew up an agreement once.
For the splash pad stuff?
No, he grew up in an agreement and they said they were gonna store it for until they found a building to put it in.
The Christmas decorations?
No, this year.
Oh, this year?
They're gonna store this until they found a building.
Do we have an agreement with them to store what's in there?
I don't think so, but I, we could, I don't know.
It'd be good to, it'd be good to know that. I mean, if we're storing tens of thousands of dollars of equipment in there, it'd be.
It's, it's short term, cause they bought the building now, so now they got room.
Well, but even short term, it'd be good to have something just for liability purposes, but, um, be at least.
I, I guess that's my concern is the liability. Um, that was a highlight of the agreement we had with the City of Algonah is that we would each ensure our own property. And, um, it was a limit of liability for us so that we wouldn't be liable for their Christmas decorations. But I see this as substantially more money and I am not aware of any agreement that has came before the board or of any discussion that came before the board in that regard.
I wasn't on the board yet at that time, but, uh, it'd be just, you never know what can happen, so maybe let's, uh, um, let's check in with Todd to, to see if there was an agreement drafted up for anything. Um, which I, and, uh, go from there, maybe have a conversation with Chris about that. That seems to make the most sense to me.
I think we need a conversation with the city too, to see where they're at, if they've found another building or if they're planning on keeping it in there, cause if they're gonna keep it in there for longer, we do need to draw up an agreement to limit the liability to the county.
I'm sure it'll be there till, at least this summer, until they would be, do construction on the splash pad.
Unless they move it to the building they bought.
And they just bought another building, so they should have plenty of storage, yeah. So, um, well, why don't, why don't we, uh, plan to have a conversation with the City of Algonah and, and, uh, if we don't have an agreement, to get moving on some form of action on that. Um, whether it be in agreement or getting the storage items moved.
Kyle, is that something you wanted to handle talking to the city, or do you think one of us should do that?
I guess, um, just for the simple fact that I'm homesick here right now, I don't think I'll be able to handle it personally myself right now. Um, but I, I think someone should be addressing that.
Is City Hall open today? I don't know. Either way, either way, today or tomorrow, I can stop in there and talk to him to just to see where they're at.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna make any decisions on that right now then.
Okay, I guess let the record show, no action was taken. Next on the agenda, or is Phil here?
That was Derek.
Uh, next on the agenda is discussion decision to acknowledge adoption of Cassuth County Ordinance Number Three Hundred A, an ordinance amending various provisions of the Cassuth County zoning ordinance for the purpose of regulating and restricting the use of land for the transport of hazards like the pipelines. Do we need to call Doug for this?
Yes.
Hey Doug, uh, here in the boardroom, we're ready for you. Alright, thank you.
Did I read that right, Number Three Hundred A? Okay, I think I mixed up my words there. And is there a resolution number or that is the resolution number?
No, uh, Doug will bring that up when he comes. That's the ordinance.
Sure. Morning. Go make a noise, Willie.
Look, are you up here for the soil and water?
I am.
Uh, that isn't until nine o'clock, so unless you wanted to stay in here for the ordinance and stuff, I didn't know.
I'm actually off today.
Oh, okay.
I'm just gonna hang out, so I'm just hanging out.
Okay.
Are all the kids home for Christmas?
They are. It's nice to have them home.
They are.
Every single day.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
We are up to the ordinance or acknowledging the adoption of the zoning ordinance.
Yes, please.
So, two weeks ago, you guys, some of you guys were ready to, uh, a boom study. Did you ever see this boom study? Did anybody see it or, or, uh, know what the, uh, results of that boom study were?
Uh, yeah, we did. Um, this isn't, I'll answer your question, but this isn't really pertaining to the agenda item, but, um, three of us.
We're talking about that hazardous pipeline, right? Is that where we're at?
We are, just to acknowledge a resolution.
Part of the pipeline, correct?
Yes, yes, but to answer your question, three of us met with, uh, in two different meetings with Summit. And if you watched the video from last week, I did share all my notes, uh, from that meeting on what their boom models were and, and those numbers that were used. Um, we didn't have any documentation to keep. Uh, they, they're not releasing any documentation to give out to the public, but I did email that out to, um, I don't know if you were included in that email or not, but emailed it out to, um, several landowners I knew were concerned, um, and asked them to forward on any, that to anyone that they would know, so. If you would like that, send me your email and I'll, I'll send it over to you as well.
So it was, this was in last week's board meeting?
This was not during a board meeting.
It wasn't? So, can you just, for everybody that's here, can you just say what the number is for the boom study?
Well, there's a lot of factors. That's why I'm saying, go back and re, if you wanna go back and listen to the video from last week when we're discussing, uh, more, having more discussion towards the end of the meeting. Um, I, I read all of my notes for that and I can forward them to you and you can have all of the, all of the information, so there's a lot in there.
So you're not gonna say what the footage, you don't wanna say what the footage is?
There isn't a said footage. It, it's based on, you know, winter.
Averages.
Yeah, so, um, they showed a couple of different models and, you know, so it, it would take us far more than just a few minutes to list off everything that they've given us.
I think what you're looking for is that for a jet release boom mile, it was two hundred and thirteen feet of a risk area under their specific averages conditions. Uh, for a, a rupture break in the ground, it was sixteen hundred foot, uh, risk area.
Smaller than an eight inch, right, that's the present.
So, so that's, does that answer your question? And if you want me to send that to you, I can wait. Um, but back to, to Doug, what, uh, what do you have for us there?
Uh, yes, the, the ordinance was published last week in Sway City Bancroft and Algon paper, so now it is effective. So, what we have done in the past with different ordinances is the board has acknowledged that, yes, the, um, everything has been published according to, um, according to rules, IO code. The board has also had their readings and, uh, acknowledged that everything has been done correctly. Uh, then we take this and it is recorded in the county recorder's office, so this is just a formality acknowledging that everything is taken care of and that everything was done properly. So first there is a resolution acknowledging that. Has a couple of, uh, whereas statements in there and then the last, uh, therefore being resolved that Cassuth County amended ordinance Number Three Hundred A has been adopted by the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors and is now acknowledged this twenty-sixth day of December twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number Twelve dash twenty-six dash twenty-three dash zero one?
Some.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wacter. Do we have a second?
And is it still twenty-six hundred feet?
We're, we're not up to discussion quite yet.
Uh, second.
Second by Supervisor Stecker. Uh, any further discussion? Yes, please.
Is the footage, what is the footage in that resolution?
Twenty-six hundred. Yeah.
The resolution doesn't.
That's, the resolution is not set a footage. You're asking about the ordinance. This is just a resolution acknowledging that we passed an ordinance, so. And filing it in the recorder's office. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, uh, do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
No.
Jarks?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Who is acting as board chair, may I ask? I did not realize that.
Kyle is out sick today with a fever, so I am acting as board chairman today.
Okay, thank you. I prepared those documents to be signed by, uh, Kyle, so I did cross that out. You can keep one of these, Tammy. And I will take this to Karen. It is to be returned to you after recording. And there's two places there for you, please, Tammy. There you go. Alright, and if you wanna just keep that one, I will bring this one up to Karen and she'll return it to you as being completed.
Alright, Doug. You're up to construction within the road right away.
Uh, there was no request for construction in the road right away this week.
And discussion with the county engineer zoning administrator?
Uh, we are starting nighttime sign inventory, so if you would get some phone calls. Uh, we go out and check reflectivity on the signs at nighttime. Probably take off this afternoon, uh, five thirty or so with the darkness and be out till ten o'clock, ten thirty, whatever it takes. So for the next week or so, we'll be out. Uh, Merriam's continuing to construct on that Gutter Bridge. They have all the piling down, uh, structural piling and they hope to have all their concrete poured, uh, this week. Uh, we still have open positions in the road department. Uh, I'm starting to work a little bit on some road vacation, roads possibly to be vacated. I'll be getting that information with board so we can discuss that more. And working on the budgets. That's kind of what is going on in the road department right now.
Okay. Anything else for Doug? If not, yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, go ahead and move on to drainage, alright? Call, call Marge, yeah?
Marge is, Marge is gone.
Oh, Marge is gone today. Okay. Uh, we are up to discussion decision to acknowledge additional site for twenty eighty agreement with IDALs for wetland buffers and appoint Bolton and Mank for engineering.
Does anybody know Bolton and Mank was planning on being here or?
I do not know. Should I give Tyler a call quick?
Does Kyle know?
I don't, I don't know if they were planning on coming in, but usually they don't for this stuff. Um, this, this is, um, an addition to the wetland stuff. Um, I'd say it's pretty standard. We've got several projects with this that they're working on right now. Um, so I had to make a motion to acknowledge the additional site and appoint them as engineer.
We have a motion by Supervisor Stecker. And I will second his motion. Any discussion or is the site a motion? Where, where is the site at, Kyle? Do you know?
Um, thought that was in our packet, um.
It, it was, I just didn't have.
It doesn't have a location.
Oh, okay.
It's got a map, but not, nothing else. It says Cassuth nine six two nine three four C, but that don't tell us anything.
Um.
It does have a map, oh yeah, but it doesn't, uh. I'm sure that's a, is that a parcel number?
Might be a number for the WCSS. That'd be their number.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to go through, um, my stuff here. I don't.
It says for the Mansky site in Cassuth County. Mansky is doing the, the work.
You do all the work.
Right.
Would you like to call Tyler for location or do you want me to see if he's available by phone?
What was that, Jack?
That's, that's.
Okay, Jack, that's okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're up to discussion decision approved of the drainage repair requests. I'll, I'll, Kyle's.
Carter, do you wanna read them there?
I can just go ahead and read them quick. First one is number one oh four on DD four lateral eighteen. Request is from Brad Arndorfer. And it's like connecting a county tile to new RCP, uh, under the road and through the road right away, and this was already completed?
Already completed.
Okay.
Um, they did put a new pipe through the road and stuff.
Okay. Second one is request number one zero five and DD one thirty-three on the main tile. Um, Seneca section eighteen, there's a large washout, uh, request by Paul Preston. And then the last one is number one oh six in DD four lateral eleven, request by, there is no name here. Oh, N, NCJC Incorporated by JPG. Joe Goshi. This is to replacement of one inch coefficient relief tile. Is necessary on account that a concrete blocked thirty-six inch relief line and a segment of open ditch was destroyed and provided one inch drainage coefficient to the DD four lateral eleven tile. The repair should extend from the junction box in Greenwood section one to the head wall of DD four lateral eleven tile located in section seven of Ramsey Township. Okay.
Um, I got a couple comments on that one.
Go ahead.
So, first off, um, there is not a thirty-six inch tile that is blocked in that location. This last week on Friday, we got the section from the ditch up to the junction box in Greenwood. Um, that first junction box in the line, we got televising completed. I was not physically able to be there because of central, I have a juvenile detention center meeting that morning. But I was in contact with the, um, televising company and landowners that were out there. Um, they're, the comments that have been made about, um, this thirty-six inch tile being buried are not founded. Um, also, I don't think we as supervisors have the technical expertise to say there's a one inch coefficient there. Um, that would be an engineering question. But McClure Engineering did that ditch project and, um, I guess, knowing the situation that we have televised and completed for that, um, I would suggest this repair request either gets denied for a lack of credibility basically. Or we could send it to McClure's for a letter response so they can talk about the coefficient for that district, but it is a long way from a one inch drainage coefficient. Roger, anyone else have thoughts?
We've never found the tile.
We, we did go in and televise, it's just, it's not there.
Okay.
It's, it's not about not finding it, it's the fact that it's not there. There are, there are two lines that come southeast out of the junction box that is referenced here and very close to the road, right after it gets into Jake Oshie's property. Those two lines combine into one and that is all on the televising. So, if the board wants to review the televising in a meeting after we receive the, the flash drives and the hard documentation, we definitely could, but factually, that tile he is referencing is not there. We have done numerous explorations for it and it's not there. Now we have televised from the ditch all the way to the junction box and that is all documented now.
Uh, I would like to see it. So I guess whenever we get the stuff, either we do it in the meeting or, or view if we're able to just kinda share it out so we can view it, but, um, I guess I'd like to see.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. It is public record, obviously, we'll, it'll take a little bit to get the report and the flash drive and the video, but it's just not there.
Okay.
The tile that they went through is functioning as designed?
Um, close, there is one spot on the north tile in the field that Tim Goshi farms, the section. The sections are offset and sucking a little bit of dirt. Um, so there is a small section that we will need to repair, but the majority of the system is functioning as designed. There's just a short section that needs a little repair, but that we did find on the televising. Everything else is good.
And that's already, did we already, uh, cover that repair in another request?
Yeah, that will be, that will be handled under, under the previous request. It's a small section.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion for supervisors to take care of their requests?
Some of them.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wacter.
Does that, does that include denying the request as Kyle said on the last one, or does that mean approving all of them?
That would be charging Kyle, I guess, to take care of the requests. How, how that would go. Um, do we wanna amend that motion to, to deny the?
No, hold request one oh six until we can view the.
Until we can view the.
Just have it on hold until we review it.
Is that an amendment? Okay.
So do you approve the first two and hold on to the?
And, and hold on to the.
Is that okay?
Yes, to number one oh six.
Okay.
Yep.
I would second that.
Okay, second, second by Supervisor Stecker. So that was a motion by Wacter, an amendment by Jarks. Then, and a second by Stecker. How is that?
Oh, really? It should be Josh, Josh's amendment.
Yeah, I agree with that amendment.
Okay, okay. All good? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will have a, well, Phil is not here. Should I give him a call? I saw his vehicles here. Hi Phil, this is Carter Nath here. Hey, are you coming over to the boardroom? Oh, okay, we have you on, we have you on the agenda for a monthly update. Okay. Well. Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, bye. He wasn't aware it was on the agenda. So he will not be coming in this morning.
He's on a, he's on a rotating schedule, so it's supposed to be every so often, so.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll just have to remind him.
Yep.
Maybe put him on for next week, unless, or next week is gonna be swamped with other stuff, but.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Yeah, just let him.
He'll probably be in sometime next week anyway too, so whatever works, whatever works. Uh, we'll have to wait till nine o'clock for budget requests. And we'll, we'll have to wait for more discussion on that too then. Have a break till nine o'clock.